I'd like to call the Adams County Board Supervisor Meeting to order, please. Ask Mr. Bradford to lead us in the prayer. We'll take the prayer at a place easy.
Let us all say it. That's about it. O God, we thank you, God, for allowing us to see a new year, God. And Father, we just ask so, God, that you continue to bless our elected officials, oh God. Father, we ask so, God, that you continue to put a head protection around them, oh God. Father, continue to give them wisdom and peace. And Father, continue to let them work together, oh God, as they do the business of this county, oh God, and look after your people. And Father, we just want to pray, oh God, for all our elected officials statewide, citywide, and in this country, oh God. Father, continue to direct their paths, oh God. And Father, we just want to pray, oh God, for any loved ones that may have lost love, or any families that may have lost love, oh God, over the last two weeks, oh God. And Father, we asking that you continue to cover them and protect them, oh God. And Father, we ask so, God, that you continue to protect our first responders, our workers, oh God, as they go forth, our schoolteachers, our kids, and they go back to school, oh God. And Father, we want to pray this year for all our businesses that's coming and that's just out of town. And Father, we just ask so, God, that you allow favor for the board supervisors, the auditors in the mayor, oh God, that businesses will come and projects will be closed out, oh God. And Father, we pray for all the financial blessings that you're going to give to your school opponents, oh God. And Father, we just ask all these prayers, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
People going to roll call Supervisor Gray.
Uh, present.
Supervisor Hutchins.
Present.
Supervisor Daines. Supervisor Middleton.
Present.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Deputy Page Dean.
Present.
I'm present. Attorney Slower.
Present.
And County Administrator Stephanie Washington.
Present.
At this point, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for President of the Board Supervisors for Adams County or county leader.
Please.
All those in favor? Any votes? Congratulations.
I was gonna nominate Warren, but he's not here.
And next I'd like to...
He's running on par.
Next I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Vice President of the Board Supervisors for a term of one year. Motion by Gray, second by Hutchins. All right, all those in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
All right. Thank y'all, I think. All right. Meeting called to order on occasion. Please leave your three appointments. I need a motion to approve the minutes. Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Ms. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. Where is that list? Okay, let me get the approve the dockets. Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Mr. President, one discussion I have is Ms. Stephanie, make sure that on this natural gathering, they have a leak over there and make sure the city paying their head for that money. Thank you.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. She's gonna give me a list of the reappointments. We'll go on to the monthly financial reports for the Adams County Sheriff's Office, Chance of Clerk and Purchasing Department. Need a motion to approve. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. Do we have any special presentations? Any special presentation? We're gonna take a short break here. Okay. Uh, what does the F stand for?
Fletcher.
Fletcher, okay. I need a motion to appoint Scott F. Slower Fletcher as the board attorney for one year. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
I got discussion. If he don't do his work, we're gonna give him six months.
Jail time or six months in the board presidency? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries, Mrs. Slower. You're back in. Motion to appoint Shaquille Martin as county comptroller. Moved by Ms. Middleton.
I would like to make the motion to appoint Shaquille Martin as the comptroller if she so desires. I'd like to want some others.
All in favor? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. I'm sorry, skip the... Motion to appoint Stephanie Washington as county administrator. Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
It's a checklist.
Okay. Ms. Hutchins, and then seconded by Mr. Gray. All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. All right, need a motion to appoint Robbie Doll as county road manager. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. All right. We don't do the motion for Darrell Smith because he resigned, didn't he? So we don't have fire department right now.
Yeah, I am. It's automatic road, am I doing this?
Okay.
Go ahead and appoint.
Okay. Need a motion to appoint Brad Smith to conduct the duties of Fire Coordinator. Brad, Brad, I'm sorry. Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. Motion to appoint George Forrest, county engineer. Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. Motion to appoint Vernon Johnson as Justice Court Administrator.
I'm looking at motion.
Motion by Mr. Middleton, being the second. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Nay.
Sir.
I'll defer that, man.
Defer, okay. President requests a form for county administrative board.
Yeah, the next, next group are for... She's gotta appoint Danny Raffey.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to appoint Dana Price as our superintendent.
You are appointing any...
I would like to appoint Dana Price as our superintendent.
Okay.
And y'all then move to Raffey.
All right. Second by Ms. Hutchinson. All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
I would like to request that Corvett McNeil be appointed as our insurance clerk.
She's appointing Corvett McNeil as the inventory clerk.
Some of them.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
I would like to appoint Claudia White as receiving clerk.
Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. Okay, we'll revisit that in a minute. All right. Back to county business. I'll see Mr. Parker out there with the insurance updated.
Good morning. I'll be brief. First of all, happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Just wanted to report, things are looking pretty good for the renewal. I've already started working on things. We might be looking at moving the demo again. I've had a couple of problems there with some claims with some people, and I'm not happy about it. And of course, the people that are having these problems are not happy. So I'll be looking at that, and hopefully I can resolve a couple of issues we have. The Samaritan Fund, which I think we're all familiar with. We had a recent move, someone going on the Samaritan Fund, which will help them and help the county. So that's some pretty good news. And one last thing, yesterday I was in a grocery store and saw an ex-county employee who now works for the state, and I won't mention which department of the state. And this person told me, "Man, I miss my Adams County health insurance." And I thought, yes, I'm glad to hear that. The employees do appreciate, and especially if they move on, they realize that the supervisors and the counties do their best to provide a functional plan for the employees. But if there are any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Mr. President, on the docket, was that fund taken out, is that for what he's talking about?
Yes.
Appreciate it, Fred. You said you'd be brief, huh?
Fred, we need to approve that contract. The Samaritan Fund, you need to approve the contract.
We need a motion to approve it.
Yes, sir.
Is that all we need to come?
Yeah, Fred, you're, you want that, us to continue with that plan as part of our overall health insurance? Okay, it's, we pay a certain amount for very high claimants or beneficiaries, and it helps reduce our overall plan. So it's been pretty effective for both us, but more importantly for our employees that are really, really sick. Not, not necessarily for their basic benefits, so.
So moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. Thank you, Fred. All right, Willie Ivory with the tax... He would've known that as soon as he walked up there. Taggy Ethan. It says Willie Ivory, he don't look like...
I try to find that every year.
Oh, okay, well, you are on the run then.
I didn't know either, but I have four board orders. McNeely, Margie McNeely, 22 Woodlong Drive, a tree built on her house two years ago. She paid the 2023 taxes, but she's asking for it to be removed this year. We did not know it until she got the tax bill.
Okay, she still, she still owns the lot?
Yes.
So she'd ask, what do you do, reduce it down to what the lot is?
Yes, we take the improvement off the house off.
Okay.
It'd be a loss of $580.
I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Any names? Motion carries. Okay.
Upton, Sonia Spencer Upton, 106 Somerset Drive. When she received the bill, she realized that it was deeded wrong, so waiting to go in and redo it. From what I understand, there was... She didn't have that stuff anymore. She didn't, and it was somebody else's name. And she had applied for homestead and received it. So the homestead was not applied, applied, and the deed was wrong. That would be a loss of $724.
Okay, the current owner is paying the tax bill then?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion? Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
The next two are... It's on the same property. It's both owned by Martha Madison at 563 Lower Whipple Road. They combined the properties, so they kind of gnaw each other out. One receives more money and one is a zero. So, and that's like $220. They, she bought some property that adjoined hers, and they did not put, they didn't combine it. So now it's combined, and one is increased and one is taken off.
So she got a tax bill to cover both properties, ain't she?
Right, well, no, she got a tax bill to cover one, and she wanted them combined. So the big, her big property's being increased, and the property she wanted combined in with her big land will be a zero. So they gnaw each other out. Does that make sense?
This is a zero balance on it.
Right.
Okay. Need a motion?
We have to have the board order to get it done.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? No. All in favor?
We're at least complete. We're at least complete, thank you.
Well, Mr. President, before you leave, I got a question. That first one was Woodlong?
22 West Woodlong.
West Woodlong.
West Woodlong, I'm sorry. McNeely, Margie.
I got it.
All right. Do we have any city government business? City government business? Scott, you know of any?
I'm gonna do a doc. Uh, 'cause she sent an email about getting me set off. Listen to her.
That's a great fucking move on. Yeah, I got no way, West Woodlong Drive, eh?
West Woodlong?
Is this in the city?
Ms. Page, you know where West Woodlong Drive is?
That's a little bit over by.
Is it in the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
They would've kinda throwed me out, I thought it was in the county, but it's in the city.
It had a 1100 district code, so yeah.
I got it.
Thank you, Doc.
All right, we got department reports. Who, who wants to speak first on that list?
Good morning, folks, happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I got a couple things this morning. First thing, I would, from the December 28 storm, we had 17 homes with some type of damage. Mema IA will be coming down this week to conduct validations on the damages that we receive on that. We should be looking good for individual assistance help, but on the PA side, we didn't get enough damage on the PA side statewide. Right now, they're waiting on the energy, all those water utilities to compile their numbers to see when we make the 5.5 million we give the president. So hopefully, when Mema do the validation on IA, those houses that may be destroyed major, that don't have issues, we probably can ask for some assistance like we did before with Delta. Well, you know, we just replaced the roofs and things of that nature. So that's something we'll probably bring back to the board after Mema does their initial assessment on that. I wanna, all that with that, we need, we have a DR3 that President signed. We need to spread across the minutes and get all the supervisor signed. I think you should have it back to the President.
You say so. I just follow our sticker up there.
It just needs to spread across the minutes.
What is it?
The Declaration from the 20th, so...
Now, the one I signed...
Yeah, I did.
That's the same, same thing?
Yeah, it's the same, it's addressed to, uh, we did have to spread across the years.
This is my favorite part of the... I'm trying to figure out where everything's at.
Okay, while you're finding, I just wanna, I just wanna thank the first responders driving in on the job we had done, responding during the holidays, through these storms. Also, I wanna say a special thanks to Ms. Corvett McNeil and Sam. They really pitched it, helped me out, opened the safe room, and monitoring that force over the holidays. I wanna thank them, they did stay, you know, so, congratulations on that. You don't get no raise for that. I appreciate that, with that. Next thing, I don't know if you got it, Supervisor, I would request a new hire position for the EMA Volunteer Fire Ops Chief position, Ms. Pam McClark, who will also serve as Deputy Director and Flood Flame Manager. You should have a page with that.
All right. Scott, do they need a, we need a motion for them to sign this declaration for Brad?
Did we already have the declaration?
No, they need to sign it, so it's still ongoing.
Yeah. Yeah, no matter what, you gotta, you declare a declaration, one supervisor of the President, and then each meeting after that, the board reviews and approves it or ends it. Is this one gonna be ended, or is it...
No, this is the first one. He went on and signed it, but it happened, so we just got to cross the minutes.
So even if it's passed, you still rat him out?
Okay. So we need a motion? Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
All right, the next should be a new hire for the position of Adams County EMA Volunteer Fire Operations Chief, Ms. Pam McClark. She will also serve as Deputy Director and Flood Flame Manager.
The rate?
At 37,500.
Okay, this is basically Darrell's old job, or is it something different?
No, this, it been reverted to that. It's another position that we need from both EMA and Volunteer Fire Operations.
All right. First hire Pam McClark. New hire, EMA Fire Ops Chief, Deputy Director, 37,500 a year. Need a motion? Moved by Ms. Hutchins. By Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Mr. President, so we need, we need to get this straight. Are we on the same page? This is not position that Darrell had, right?
It's a, it's a combination. It's a hybrid, it does help support Mr. Bradford, so we're getting a two for one for this position.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion?
So, the Fire Coordinator side of her, are you gonna...
Yeah, I do that.
Take that permanent?
Yeah, I got that permanent, yeah. So she got the flood, so I'm taking up position and giving her one.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. What about fire investigation?
That's the sheriff. Yeah, he's, they have it left once, I think the 90 days, and Darrell, they back he's on. Sure, that's law enforcement.
All right, all in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Okay, I should be in the thing of a question, travel for myself and these three cooks to attend the Alabama Emergency Management Resilience Summit in Holy Alabama with Mema, and that's gonna be February 5th and 6th.
You say I should have that as well?
Yeah, thank you.
5th and Wood, right?
5th and 6th of February.
We got people going all over the place.
Is the county paying for this?
Yes, county.
You said for free and yourself?
Yeah, it should be.
And you, you dropped it off?
Yeah, it should be a phone call, sir.
Wait a second. It's not in my travel folder. Okay. Brad, Brad. Virginia manager. Zillion summit. Okay, I've got one for pre-cooks, one for Brad. Need a motion?
Do you have all of your hotel information, or have you always sent that over to...
Yeah, they are, they're already had it, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any names?
Okay, I'm moving to the fire services side. I did give Scott, we talked about the two hydrants that warned the B and L district. And I did talk to Mr. Care here. He advised me that our fire hydrant agreement needs to be updated. Last time it was updated was 1989. I think somebody named vaccine was president, and it hasn't been updated since. So I did send it to Scott, did you get a copy of that, Scott?
Yeah, you sent it to him too.
Yeah, and I want, we need to look at that and revise, I do with Robert, and reduce the wording in it, 'cause it hasn't been updated since 1989, I mean, 1989, on the fire hydrant for the county. And I didn't agree with it, they had it.
And they did advise us not to put those in the fire.
Right, and they did advise us, you know, that's the wording we need to put in there, not putting fire hydrants on anything that's...
Smaller than four inches.
Fuck smaller than four inches. So we need to put that in the agreement with them. And that's how that be an ordinance for the county.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
I just...
Yeah, I'll be here.
Until we have a...
Yeah, until the I'll be pretty bored, you know, still.
The agreement's still in effect until we shoot it to not, what it be in effect.
Okay, all right. Uh, next thing, I would request travel to Yazu City. It's gonna be a one day turnaround for the Exxon Mover Hatchet Training, Volunteer Fire Fighters on the Mover Trailer. On the Mover Trailer, and the traveling's gonna be myself, Ms. Pam Clark, Volunteer Fire Fighter Bo Wells, Addis Cusett, and James Young. And this will be Saturday, January 8th.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'll be followed by Danine.
That doesn't look like Danine. Go ahead, Ms. Page.
Come on, boy. And that fails to be 91. I just wanna give you the numbers for the whole month of December for the fall of August. Almond S.O.A. 509, Natural Speedy Head 47, and Natural Fire Correction, Natural Speedy Head 931, Natural Fire Control 47.
Okay. All right, like a man.
Good morning. My name is Shaquille Martin, I'm from Adams County. I would like to notify the board that our Council receivable clerk put in her resignation on 12/20/2024. She said, "I'm right, it's upon that night, my resignation from the position as Council receivable clerk will keep in effect Friday, January 3rd, 2024." Uh, she said I'm right, it's upon that now, it's our resignation from the position as Council receivable clerk, good keeping up with Friday, January third, twenty twenty-five, two weeks from the date of this letter. This decision was not an easy one, as my time at Adams County has been incredibly rewarding. I am deeply grateful for our service to grow professionally, and for their support and encouragement provided by you and the team. In the coming weeks, I am committed to ensuring a smooth transition, please let me know how I can assist in handling all, handed, handed, handed off my responsibilities on training and replacement. Thank you once again for allowing me to be a partner of the County, Accounts Receivable Bookkeeping Department, I look forward to standing in such and which company has seen six, sincerely, Bushonda Renee Bright.
When is the last?
Ranger.
When is the last date?
The last date was Friday.
I need a motion to set the latter, moved by Ms. Hutchins. Somebody second it? Second it? Any discussion, all in favor? Any names, motion carries? What are your plans, uh, you're gonna move somebody up and you need another person?
Training, but I, I do know the duty, so we will do them in-house until I think of a decision, I wouldn't move forward.
Yeah, you know, I want all department heads to know, if somebody resigns or something, you think you can do without them, you know? That's the fastest way for us to ever get anybody a raise.
Right, right, I understand.
We can drop. Okay, thank you, thank you for picking the slack up there.
Good morning, the one who tries purchase clerk for Adams County, I would like to spread the procurement car and travel car across the minutes will improve for November twenty twenty-four.
Moved by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion, all in favor? Any names, motion carries?
Hey, on December third at ten a.m., we had the bids for the sheriff's vehicles, I would like to take this under advisement and do some specs of the vehicles. Not mentioned.
Uh, okay, so you're gonna take it under advisement until?
Um, I'm gonna meet with Stephanie Travis, and we're gonna look at the specs and see what we should decide on the current decision.
Okay. We don't need to say that, do we? Okay, all right.
Uh, on January second, twenty twenty-five, we had bids for debris removal, one year disaster debris removal. We had T F R Enterprise at nine dollars and seventy-five cent per cubic yard, with C T C disaster response at six dollars and seventy-two cents per cubic yard. Look great, services of Mississippi, six dollars and twenty-five cents per cubic yard. Stafford Vegetation, um, that's questionable because their bid was done with vegetation, and they do not have a, um, do not submit the proper bid for it.
What they're out, I guess.
Yes. Good health recovery, seven dollars and eighty-one cent per cubic yard, Southern Disaster Recovery, eight dollars and twenty-five cents per cubic yard. D R C Mercy Services, eight sixty-eight per cubic yard, looks great, Services of the Mississippi, it's six dollars and twenty-five cents, it'd be the lowest and best bid.
All right, the lowest bid was six twenty-two?
Six twenty-five.
I thought I heard a six twenty-two in there, the second one called out?
No, yeah, it's six seventy-two.
Okay, I missed that, okay, so, there's two of them that's six twenty-five, looks, or are you saying it looks great for six twenty-five, and that's the lowest bid?
That's the one.
Okay. We need a motion? Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second it?
I'll second the discussion.
Okay, all right, uh, second by Mr. Bill, discussion?
I just wanna check with Mr. Dollar, make sure.
And that's fine, as long as we got somebody on hand that can do it, we don't necessarily have to use them, but as long as they're there, and that's, you know, should be okay to.
Right.
This, this allows you to.
Looks good, looks.
Looks good or looks great?
It's looks.
Looks great.
Right, Services of Mississippi, I N C.
Yeah, this allows you to use this group if you choose, but get reimbursed by FEMA and Nemo, that's why you do these things, but hit them out. If not, you gotta go back, six twenty-five.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I know we stick the border, but with that, I know we do, we, we, we got the year contract on it. I would ask the boys, we need to look at doing it after three years, where we doing the bid every year, and a lot of people just report, they, they give reputation, they don't like doing this thing over three years. That's what I'm saying, we run into that problem now, uh, so if we need to do it for three years and get a contract and lock them in, where we know they're dedicated to us. Uh, before a storm or something happens, then we try, something happens, hit three or four counties, then we fighting for the same people.
So when we bid next time, you wanna do it for three years?
Yeah, we, we get a contract, I already get the contract locked in, so they know they supposed to support Adams County, cause we don't do a contract with them, and another county hire them, we gonna have to go back through the process again, and try to find somebody.
That advertising was for one year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's saying the next time.
Next time.
Next time, then we next.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Any names, motion carries?
One question, um, Scott, when we have to have a contract, two, uh, rights of contract, one year, um, that's.
Well, it can be either us or them, usually that vendor has a contract, and we send our addendum to, to contracts, if it have to be that.
Since it's just one year, I, I just, I would do a contract for one year.
Yeah, you can't, you can't change it when you advertise.
So I, I'd rather we wait to three years, then get a major contract, then lock it.
It's just for next year.
Yeah.
Else we never get advertising.
That's okay, Rob.
And the last thing I have, um, the purchase of Ricky's, uh, vehicle. Robbie and I, um, checked around locally, and they're like in the mid forties, um, for the vehicle that we were trying to get with the specs being met. Um, and remember, we went over the one with state contract, it was thirty-nine or something, so, um, and the trade in is about the same, seventeen, eighteen thousand locally as well.
My recommendation to the board, cause the trade in, keep your truck, put it somewhere within the county, it's worth more to the county than it is for that type of.
I agree with that too, uh, the, uh, trading truck in, it hadn't been, it's not like Ricky's been out there raw hiding or anything.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward with the, um, thirty-nine thousand for the state contract.
Yeah, we, we in motion for that? Motion, buy that truck thirty-nine thousand, and some change, by Ms. Hutchins, second. Did I get a second?
You seconded.
No, I'm asking for a second, but I will second it, uh, any discussion?
I have a question, um, did you check with the vendor to see if they had any availability before you make that motion? Um, could you put an alternate in there just in case, um, if it's not available, the state law say you have to have two comparable quotes, and if, if it's not available on the state contract, they can at least, um, just get two quotes and do the regular purchase thing.
And she can just turn in her two, two.
Usually around the year end, they have some year end models, but sometimes the stuff that's on state contract, they don't have it available, so.
Do you know if that's available?
It was when we spoke last time.
It's not, she already got the two quotes.
Okay.
I have two quotes.
So she just needs to turn those into these?
They both are state contract.
Okay, all in favor? Any names, motion carries?
Good morning, boy.
Next, Tim, how you doing?
I'm doing pretty good, thank you, sir. Uh, total of one thousand and ninety-five requests in December, uh, four hundred and a half of those come from nine-one proper, and just kinda, it kinda hit me funny, because that's the higher number. I went back and looked, and that's the highest number we've done in a single month for nine-one in like six years. Um, average transport rate was around seventy-one percent for two hundred and ninety of those that accepted transport to the hospital, eight minutes and thirteen seconds in the city for eighty-nine percent, and fifteen of three for ninety-five in the county. Uh, we did note a decrease, decrease in the side calls, because, you know, they, they cut it by sixty-six percent, because the heat kinda went away for a bit. Uh, two hundred and fifty-one times, we had multiple calls taking place at the exact same time in the county, uh, with different trucks assigned, five phones straight from the field. Uh, we do continue to hire, we have four more employees scheduled start orientation on the twentieth, that's including both medics and E N Ps. And right now, we are better than we have been in, I wanna say, ten years on our paramedic staff, and so our efforts and focus to continue increasing that payless fat load over the last several years is starting to pay off, and we're, we're real happy with that. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, sounds like you had an exciting night. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, boy.
Good morning.
Sam, remind of, uh, veteran service officer for the county, uh, last year was a, an interesting year, made some strides, uh, trying to do, uh, do a little bit better this year. With a few more programs and, uh, custom budgets I would look for, but I, I don't really have anything to report to you guys, uh, this meeting, so that'll be it, uh, unless you have any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Mine? Keep it up, man. Appreciate it. Yeah, how you doing?
Good. Uh, I've got an update on the Adams County home grant, we're finally making real progress, uh.
What, just been high a year?
Yeah, it's twenty-one grant, and we didn't get a contract on for twenty-three, and yes, dragged on, but anyway, construction's finally started, we finally got the notice received from the Mississippi Home Corporation about two weeks ago. And Caesar Col, the contractor's moving pretty quick, so I've got a cash request for you, this is all hundred percent grant funded. Uh, on the home of John Thompson, uh, fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, he's already removed the mobile home, uh, cleared it out, and, uh, set up pad. And then on Lucille Smith, uh, hers was a, just a rehab of her home, and he's completed that job. So that total is forty-seven thousand fifty dollars, and then I've got twelve thousand eighty dollars for admin fees for Southwest Mississippi, planning and developing.
Okay, this money is already in the, uh, in the account, or is this?
It is not, and I'll, I'll say this, the contractor, Mississippi Home Corporation has been notoriously slow for everything, including, including cash requests, and he's a pretty small contractor. You wanna be to ask the board if I'm okay with paying these upfront, I'll submit these to the Mississippi, uh, Home Corporation, then we're gonna, they'll, whenever it comes in, it comes in, maybe a month, it may be two weeks, maybe seven weeks, who knows? That's up to y'all.
When, you're saying paying the contractor before he does the work?
No, no, he's done the work.
He's done the work.
He's done the work, it's, uh, we're waiting on reimbursement from home.
That's right, we, we, sometimes what we do, we submit this, Adams County waits to get money from Home Corporation, and then pays the contractor, which would be, he said if he doesn't, y'all do it that way, that's probably just gonna hold him up, he can't, he can't afford to buy the trailers. And move them in, and, and until he gets paid for like, for these big amounts.
I don't think we have that much in general fund to.
You may not, that's fine, I'm telling you, it's just a request.
Well. Yes.
Up to y'all.
Is it, well, I know, well, I'm gonna let you know, it's illegal.
Yeah, it's legal if it's, and if it's, we're obligated to pay it, then it's legal for us to go in and pay it. Um, does the contract say we don't have to pay until we're, we're, we are reimbursed for it?
No.
Probably doesn't, so, yeah, you.
There's a time period to leave the money out, once you see.
You can't pay someone before they do work, when they done the work, and we're waiting for our, you know.
Would you just look over the contract and find out what's in the contract, and if we supposed to pay the man, then pay the man.
Sure. Shoot, shoot it over to.
Motion pending legal review. Don't you do a motion pending his legal review?
So moved.
All right, motion pending legal review, motion by Mr. Gray. Second by Ms. Hutchins, any more discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries?
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Do we need to approve the request to, for the cash to?
Thought you just did. There's the cash request, Kevin's son.
Wait, Ms. Ivory, what are you doing?
Willie, Willie made an error.
Willie made a mistake, okay.
McNeely, Marty McNeely's already been taken care of, it's taken care of last year, the one you were asking about, okay, okay, that's right, now we need to, uh, they have one for Michael Jackson. He, he passed, he's another Michael Jackson.
What about it?
Um, two thirteen, Michael Jackson at two thirteen, George, his, his house burned in twenty-two.
Right.
We still have him on the road.
So what we need to do?
Take it off, take the home off.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gray, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion, all in favor? All right, any names, motion carries?
Next time I'll stick with female names.
Okay, that'd be helpful.
Good morning, boy, I'm Corbin.
Willie Ivory on the market. Go ahead, Ms. Corbin.
Hey, I'm Corbin McNeil with the, um, insurance clerk, I need to spread my certificate cover next four years across the minutes, um, we need to be tested back in August. And we're just gonna, I just got mine in today, the need has occurred, and it's all your heads there, so, but they need to be recorded.
Do we need to do it for all of them?
We do, we need to have all of them recorded.
Okay, I need a motion to record all three of them across the minutes. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Good morning, boy. I'll be up here twice, I guess, um, first I just say, uh, Happy New Year, everyone. And, uh, I stand report to this board being said that your group, uh, we are sixty percent complete, the designer agreed, uh, we should be completed up to submit all the environmental documents to the various state, state agencies. Um, as far as bird holders concerned, we did receive notification over the Christmas break that we can proceed with the electronic right-of-way process, put in process, put in project. And so the district L P A, our engineer, M dot, I can give them access to portal, and then we should upload those documents, and I can do that, I, I can, I already have a L P A access to it. So once they give me access to it, I can just upload the right-of-way documents, hopefully they get approval, and then we can move forward with the advertising front. Um, today I'll be doing the B O with, uh, C, uh, E W P C zero four four, which is off the lane, we're gonna drive the Churchill Road, so that will take place at, uh, ten, ten a.m. Uh, C zero four five, which is, um, Ohio Highway eight four, five hundred and four, change the road, it's done, bar five, the design is complete, uh, once we get done with the, uh, fee and acquisition phase, we'll have it out there probably as well.
And George has already handed this over to me, one of them only had one right-of-way that we need to get, obviously that one's already contacted the landowner to get that one signed, and the other one, Scott, seven or eight, I think, that we gotta get done, so I'm working on that one. But you wanna have that one ready to be outbid by next meeting is the goal, sometimes it's tough to track people down.
Uh, what I do is I just prepare the advertising shortly after the meeting. And, uh.
The board previously already said, Scott can go ahead with the right-of-way work, and, and so can we, you know.
For real?
So we can get expedite this, this, uh, this process and do.
And the project should be zone back on Morgantown Road sometime this week.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh. Who's drafting, when it big old hole did rather?
Right.
Laugh.
Laugh.
That's when he figured out, being on right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Good morning, boy. Happy New Year. First thing I have, I pass them out before y'all, the four-year road plan, uh, if any supervisor, uh, bringing these off of some, they put Scott's guy. Like I said, our four-year road plan, y'all can go with anything we need to add, we can, it's not, it's not, we got a big, we don't, you can't add.
These uh, striping projects, are they still going up, or they kinda topped out and started going down the other way? They, they really got by their hand.
They do, I mean.
With the cars?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it, what it used to be to stripe a road?
Yeah, I can, I have to look back, they got, they.
Like twenty thousand dollars a mile, huh?
Yeah.
In an hour. Fifty-hundred, it's great.
It's about twenty now. For the ten year water, ten year car. Yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve this?
What?
The road plan?
I, I just do right now.
Go with the A, you can always say it.
Oh, boy.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We usually do it at the second week in January, right?
That's right. And one can go over here, see.
Okay, let's move on.
Yeah.
We'll put that on.
Next thing I have is a, possibly legal dump site at the end of Z Lane, which it is, it's legal dump site. Like for board giving permission to clean it up.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, Robbie, is, is in any kind of way we can uh, get uh, some kind of camera down there?
We got this up, Mr. Gray, like I said, we got signed there, uh, we cleaned it up before. Like says, it's a dead-end road, I, I understand a lot of residents. But they, yeah. Want to buy the site.
They ain't gonna see that, what, what, uh, green wood? If we get more on that corner, I don't believe the people live down there as the ones that's dumping. So if, if we could get something on that corner, then we can catch somebody coming up from wherever, uh, turning into wherever with, with illegal stuff, and we probably could catch them. I mean, the day that I notified you, and with the picture that you shown me, they done dumped again. So, they need to be covered.
Okay, I'll get something up there. Um, President Wilson, I have a uh, West Tire Grant.
Did we carry the motion?
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
West Tire Grant for two thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. For us to receive.
Did you ring it in this morning, or did you uh?
Uh, shit.
I thought I saw this earlier while I was digging. You didn't lay it up here, did you?
No, I think Corbin said she had it up there. Got a copy of that, I don't have the original.
All right. Which one is it?
All right, that's uh, first, give me first twenty-five hundred and fifty-six dollars, and the same grant for twenty-five thousand, I'll close it out.
Okay, you wanna do it in one motion?
Can.
So moved.
All right, move by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Next thing I have, uh, College Point Road, uh, Mr. Middleton, um, Mr. Ford has got his designs sent over to me. Uh, I looked at it, it looks good, I'm asking the board to give Mr. Ford permission to go ahead and advertise to get that project up.
So moved.
Sorry.
Move by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
And I had the fire hydrant, but uh, Brad told me to put some down, Gaylor and Jeffrey Road, uh, that's a fourth company did recommend us to put the hydrants on, be nothing less than forty. So I had, I might be, I'm looking at, that's all I had, but y'all have my part.
I, I got, uh, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, I got, uh, sixty-six, Panview Drive, uh, the homeowner called me, I went out, and it looked like they got a drain. You familiar with it, Robbie, this, the drain between both of those houses? And the water is coming out, coming down the street, running in the drain, running through both of their yards. It looked like a old EWP project or something. And uh, I told him we'll come out there and check it out.
All I have.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Red Look Road, you been out there lately? Looks like there's a bunch of, I mean, we, we, we had a place where people had dumped a lot of trash in the past. It's, it, it does, it's pretty rough out there.
Oh, Red Look?
Mm-hmm.
I went through it, um, a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, I, they, I got pictures a week ago, I mean, there's, there's garbage everywhere now, whether it's just stuff or.
That's everything. That trailer park that you may have out there, that's, that's, you can go out there writing out, just out there yesterday. And I know exactly what you refer to, because we can't just clean it up. But every, you can clean Red Look Road, roll it up today, and tomorrow it's gonna be trash. Just what we be is, I mean, that's it, I mean, like, is it a dump site?
No, it's just all, it's rolling.
Oh, stuff is thrown out, this is where they clean it out.
It's pretty, it's pretty piled up, I, I think, I think it's worth you going, maybe, maybe take a look at.
Get some pictures and put something, you know. It's take much to get or do it, it could take something, I'm bringing back, or you do dump site.
If they might have the pictures here. It looks like more just bags, well, truck tires. Pretty good bit of stuff. All right, thank you.
Thank you, all.
Everybody all in open, again.
All right.
This is, the bid opening for Adams County EWP project number C zero four four. That's for Lockton Lane, Brooklyn Drive, and Churchill Road. I have five bidders for bid opening on today. All right. Those bidders are Camel Construction, Spinks Construction, G Rayborn, Contracted LLC, Hope Enterprise LLC. And I have Maynard Land Stating Company Incorporated. All right. The construction estimate footage party was six hundred and eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Again, that's six hundred and eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. The first package I'll be opening will be from Camel Construction, who has a certificate of responsibility number of one-two-four-twenty-three dash MC. Again, a certificate of responsibility number is one-two-four-two-three dash MC. Their bid bond is Liberty Ritual Insurance Company. Again, their bid is, their bid bond is Liberty Ritual Insurance Company. And it's at five percent. After they've signed and duplicated. And Camel's bid for this project is uh, is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Again, that's three hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Next, I'll be opening up Spinks Construction, with a certificate of responsibility number of zero-six-three-four-four dash MC. That's zero-six-three-four-four dash MC. After they've signed and duplicated. Bid bond is with Harco National Insurance Company. Again, that's Harco National Insurance Company.
Har, with H?
Yes, H-A-R-C-O, National Insurance Company. Their proposal is signed, and their bid is nine hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Again, their bid is nine hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Next, I'll be opening G Rayborn Contracted LLC. Certificate of Responsibility number two-two-five-four-seven dash MC. That's two-two-five-four-seven dash MC. Their bid bond is granted, RE Incorporated. That's granted by RE Incorporated. After they've signed and duplicated. Proposal form is signed, and their bid is four hundred and five thousand three hundred dollars. Again, their bid is four hundred and five thousand three hundred dollars.
Which one is that?
That is uh, G Rayborn Contracted LLC. Next, I'll be opening Hope Project LLC. Certificate of Responsibility number of two-four-one-nine-eight dash MC. Uh, that's two-four-one-nine-eight dash MC. After they've signed and duplicated. Their bid bond is with Atlantic Specialty Insurance Company. Again, that's Atlantic Specialty Insurance Company. Their proposal is signed, and their bid is four hundred and eighteen thousand fifty dollars. That's four hundred and eighteen thousand and fifty dollars. And the final bid I'll be opening will be for Maynard Land Stating Company. A certificate of responsibility number is two-four-five-four-six dash MC. That's two-four-five-four-six dash MC. Their bid bond is with LCCI Insurance Company. Again, their bid, their bid bond is with LCCI Insurance Company. All right, after they've designed and duplicated. And signed, the proposal is signed, and their bid is for three hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred and ten dollars and fifty-six cents. That's three hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred and ten dollars and fifty-six cents.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I know we got, Camel, excuse me, sir, you with somebody?
Mayor.
Mayor, okay, this, this, this is a question I wanna ask. Uh, when y'all went out and looked at the uh, EWP? Is this bid is for, when y'all just went out and looked, or when you went a long time ago and looked?
Uh, we looked at them about a week and a half ago.
Thank you, sir. Cause I wanna know, cause you know, sometimes i- it's a year between when we get our money, and, and, and it get worse. And we bid on something that's worse. I don't know about it, to bid on nothing that got worse, and we ain't got enough money to, to do the project.
We're gonna, we're gonna work like this in Warren County right now, so we, we just found out about it.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask you a question? Yes. Where are you from? Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh, okay. Um, I don't believe I've ever seen your name before on anything, you just. Never been on anything in matches, we, we mainly deal with Warren County, Neil Schaefer, City of Pittsburgh. Okay, but what's your name, I'm sorry? Dudley, Mayor, I'm the owner. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate you being here. Yes, sir.
Uh, make a motion, take it under advisement. Is that the right motion?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gray to take it under advisement, and second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries, we're gonna take the bid under advisement. Thank y'all for your bids and your time. All right, departmental reports.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Uh, trash report for December, uh, District one, fifty-two bags. District two, sixty-one bags. District three, ten bags. District four, sixteen bags. District five, eighteen bags. Total one fifty-seven. Then we had two hundred and fifty-eight bags from the sheriff's office, twenty-nine bags from the courthouse, and thirty bags from the sanitation ward.
Okay, have we done anything about getting them to take their trash to the dumpster, or a dumpster, or have we put one? What, what do you, what did we decide about that? Are y'all still have to go over there and pick all the trash up, or are they walking across the street?
No, sir, we're gonna go over and get it.
Yep, well, Mr. President, the reason, I don't know, I don't know how to do it, but the company that, uh, doing it, it is not an everyday company, right? How many days a week they work?
I don't think it's taking up.
No, no, I'm talking about the contract cleaning company, how many days they work?
Well, they work all the time, but they work different office buildings, so they're here twice a week per building, pretty much. But it's, Monday, Monday they'll be on these two buildings, and Tuesday they'll be on that, so they're working every day, it's just not every, every building's not being cleaned every day.
I, I was under the impression that we're gonna require the, the employees, when they're taking the trash out, if it, if it's not the cleaning crew, or even the cleaning crew, just be putting them in a dumpster somewhere instead of doubling, triple handling the bags of trash. Cause they're not, it's not like it's, we're at McDonald's here, and you know, it's full of cups, and you know, full of ice and all that kind of stuff, it's just paper. Um, do, do we have a dumpster, we got one right back. Um, do, do we have a dumpster? We got one right back, back here, don't we?
No. Well, from what the chef said, if, if we do it like that, then we gonna have stuff all on the ground.
If you leave it by the dumpster, that is correct.
Not leave it by, I mean, put it in the dumpster.
Well, you know, that was the problem though, is that we had two dumpsters, and one went to one, and it, it overflowed with the amount of trash that was coming. That happened on the, back when Joe Murrah was living. And so, when it overflowed, people started putting the trash on the ground around it. And all your stray animals downtown just found it as feeding ground, and it was bad.
So what, what do we need to do? Just keep letting y'all pick it up like you're doing, or?
No, I wish you could get another dumpster, put two more dump, put two dumpsters back over here and let them walk across. Or, I know, in turn this way, with Texas, a bill about it, it's in one of them contracts where they're supposed to get it. I think it's the, the actual trash contract. Am I wrong? Which one is it?
The collection contract provides, they provide enough dumpsters to do it.
Yes.
We can talk to them, see what's-
See if they can raise another dumpster, and then there's some people can walk it across the street.
And see, that would help us at the sheriff's office too, though, because right now we got to store trash in the center for to keep the animals from getting-
Can you look out into that Stephanie scene, tell them we need another dumpster over there, and, um-
That would help us.
And they just, they don't need to be throwing outside the building. They, people can walk it over here. We have to take our trash out of home, they can take the trash out of, they're getting paid. Um, okay. Go ahead.
I have, is, uh, Mr. Washington, if you get the request for a budget agreement. Uh, what we're requesting is, uh, to move forty-five thousand from other level equipment over five thousand and move it to other level equipment under five thousand. So we'll be moving from two zero one two hundred nine eighteen to two zero one two hundred nine seventeen. This is for replacements of computers and printers. Um, now that we've gone to the new software system, we're going with laptops as opposed to towers, and we need to get a couple of printers. Most of these would have to be replaced anyway within this budget year. Uh, it's just, we can't buy from over five thousand, we gotta get it from under five thousand.
Have you looked at that? It's fine. They just, uh, it's just a code in. They just moved one line to the, they're hoping for something.
All right. Motion by Ms. Hutchins. Second. I'll second it. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Most are carried.
Uh, Mr. Slower, I got the email from you about sending the, uh, tenants to Megan. Over at the, the city is, do I need to do that weekly, monthly? How, how?
Time for what?
I'll ask Megan. Project Safe Neighborhood.
So we done got this straight?
Hmm.
Okay.
It says we have, um, we run all-
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna tell you something. Uh, I wasn't here today at meeting, but in the near future, uh... Mr. President, um, I hope everybody agreed with this. In the near future, when something like that happen with the city and the county, somebody from this board need to be at the table at the beginning of whatever going on, because if we catch it in the middle, stuff like this, I, I don't think we was at the table at the beginning. I know I got a phone call, and without rich setup, I think you got a phone call. Only thing I'm saying, if we negotiating anything, we need to be at the table at the beginning. That's all I'm saying. And make it run a little smoother. With our legal person, make sure everything legal.
Mr. Slower, for clarity, how did it, what did we end up doing? Did we have our county board pay about the city, or are we still just being paid by the county?
Moving forward, the county employees are paid by the city at the rate that, that the city approved, and the county is going to pay, uh, uh, will present it to them, and I believe they will prove it, uh, pay the N P D for their, their-
So, again, just for clarity, we submitted a, a number of hours on this case note, like when you was wanting. Is that coming from the county at the, the normal overtime rate, or is that gonna be run to the city? The reason I'm asking that, if we have employees asking questions, and when their paycheck comes, there are several of them that have worked-
For time that they have already worked, the county pays them at their rate.
Their overtime rate.
And if overtime is legally required, they have to pay that overtime, and if it's not, they, they don't, you know, can't change federal law. For moving forward, there's a rate that the city approved for deputies, and the city has suggested there's a rate that will approve for their police officers. So we'll be able to pay them at that particular rate. So for work they have already performed, they're paid at their normal rate by the county, right? And if they incurred in overtime, they get overtime.
Yes, sir.
And we discussed the other allowance as well.
Yes, sir.
But that was already under your policy, so you already, y'all approved it, so that's, that's how it's done.
Do, do you know what's in place though, moving forward?
Yeah, moving forward now, city's gonna pay, uh, deputies, and now presume, the county's gonna pay the police. I say I presume, so I have to formally ask-
Boy, wait, wait, wait. The county gonna do what, man?
He's gonna pay the N P D.
We gonna pay?
Well, the police officers, that's right.
If, if I may, whenever this discussion comes up, is, I know the county put forth, our, has agreed to put a substantial amount of money more than the city.
Yep.
The issue that I want the board to understand is, we are usually working eight to ten people at a time. The P D is usually working one to two. So the money doesn't quite, it's gonna end for us a whole lot sooner than it is gonna be for the, the city. They just don't have the manpower to have the work double, mandatory overtime, and so on and so forth, that shifts. We are covering the majority of, of this project.
Sure, I'm looking. My, my suggestion for that is-
Yeah, to my understanding, they asked us to match their money that they was putting up for Operation Safe Neighborhoods. Now, I don't have no idea of where, they just pay theirs, and we got more people in safe, operation safe neighborhoods than they have, and they pay less. I thought it was the amount that the city and the county put up the first time that they was gonna pay everybody with that amount of money. Is that not correct? So it don't make no difference how many people they got on there. They said that they was gonna pay a certain amount to Operation Safe Neighborhoods.
I, I think where the problem's coming in, and correct me, Mr. Slower, is the county cannot pay its home employees at a thirty dollar an hour overtime rate, which is what was promised to the employees. If they pay it through the city, they can't. And vice versa for the city employees over here. That was my understanding of what, where the whole problem is coming in.
Yeah, federal law prohibits you from paying two different, and it makes sense to do rates for the same amount of work. So they couldn't do that. They couldn't switch, when they're doing this project, they're thirty dollars an hour. When they're doing their normal duties, they're at twenty dollars an hour. And then, if they exceed their overtime, it wouldn't be thirty dollars an hour, it would be forty-five dollars an hour, cause it's federal law requires time and a half. So it becomes an issue when you set a pay rate. So to cure that, and it's the same for the city, to cure that, the city's paying the county as a seasonal or temporary worker, and the county's paying the cities as a seasonal or county worker. There's a forty thousand dollar agreement by both parties, and as you said, we're, we agreed to pay that amount, and they agreed to pay that amount. And, you know, I'm, I understand what you're saying. That makes a lot of sense. We, we'll pay what we agreed to pay, whether it's eight deputies, or whether it's ten deputies and five, it's still forty thousand dollars and forty thousand dollars. I would probably ask that the sheriff's office probably cal about logistics of Operation Safe Neighborhood, and how many employees they need and so forth, so that the operation continues to work right. For the additional funds, and I've already talked to the sheriff about that, the county approved an additional forty thousand dollars to go to continue and making it safe. At that forty, once our first forty thousand has run, it's, you know, that forty thousand's gonna go back to our deputies, and it won't, they won't get that thirty dollar rate at that point, which I've already told the sheriff, we couldn't do, couldn't keep that flexible rate.
Let, let, let me, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. Now, the additional forty, to my understanding, I didn't make the motion, was for the sheriff department.
That's exactly right.
It wasn't for Operation Whatever. It was for the sheriff department.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and at that point, if they're calling the sheriff, they won't get that set rate of Operation Safe Neighborhood. They have to go to their normal rate. And, and when, if it's overtime, which would probably will be, they'll go into overtime.
Scott, of that money, let's, let's use the forty thousand dollar number. We're, we're still paying, paying, uh, PERS, and we're paying, um, all their taxes out of that money. So the forty thousand, it's only like, in real money for them, it's only like twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand. We're, we're having to take, we're having to take everything, all the stuff out of there. We're, we're not absorbing that.
That's, that's more a shocking question, but they're probably not gonna earn, is if they're seasonal workers for us, and they don't reach that thirty hour threshold, which they're probably not going to for us, then they're not gonna incur a liability of PERS and whatnot.
Okay, I, I'll just, you know, you can get into that deal, if you're gonna pay this much an hour, I need you to pay all the, all the taxes.
There won't be taxes, but, you know, but the PERS and, and health insurance, obviously, they're not part of that seasonal.
Okay.
I have a question. Make me understand this. I know you said the city would be paying the deputies, and we would be paying the, the policemen, right?
Moving forward, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If, and I mean, y'all have, I was gonna bring it up on, on my report, and y'all still have to approve, uh, adding those, those guys as, as seasonal workers.
So the policemen, are we gonna be paying them the same amount that the city are paying the deputies?
That's right. It's thirty dollars an hour for that project.
Thirty dollars an hour.
Yes, ma'am.
That's for the first forty thousand, right?
That's exactly right. Once that first forty's run out, it, and then it goes into the sheriff's office as additional, and they pay him as a normal rate, which could include overtime.
I, I got, I don't know what the question is. Oh, you mean-
Different rates.
Okay, okay.
Okay, you go ahead, uh, is that all you got?
That's all I had, you know.
Okay.
If somebody else-
I need to add-
Good morning, Boris. Morning. I do want to request something from you all this morning, and, um, I'm glad y'all brought up Project Safe Neighborhood, Superfide Rate. You're absolutely correct, and that we should have had you all at the table, President Wilson as well. But you know, with the level of urgency that was in this community at the time things happened, and so I would apologize for not having at least two of you all there. But moving forward though, I do wanna, I do wanna request a meeting with at least two of you all, and two from the city, because we really need to talk about the state of law enforcement in this community, and what we at, and what we are. I don't have a problem doing it publicly, but if you do it publicly, you know how that can go. So I'm asking that at least two of you all, meet with two of them, so y'all really get a clear understanding of where both agencies are at, and where we're at at this day and time. I see you spot supervisor, I know you know what I'm talking about. Huh?
I know.
I know. And so, just Project Safe Neighborhood, they occurred a lot, a lot of stuff. But that's a temporary thing, cause moving forward, if you look at, if you look at all the agencies around us right now, if you pay attention to what's going on, they are funding their law enforcement. They're putting money in, trying to keep that, keep their, their train offices, and it's a whole lot going on. Warren County just took their deputies to fifty thousand three hundred a year coming out of Boot Camp, and that's a hard to compete with for us and the city, so... I'm just asking, moving forward, sooner than later, if two of y'all willing to meet, we'd love to go over where we're at. And I would, I really want the city there too, because the city, it's tough on them right now, because of certain things they can't say because of their numbers. But if you knew the numbers like I do, you'd be afraid right now. And that's just the reality of it. And so that's why I'm asking for you all to meet with us and them, and let's have a real conversation of how where things are at. We're on the floor now, we work tirelessly. I've been right along with these guys, ever not, every day. Matter of fact, some nights we almost didn't even go home when the shooting happens. That's kinda commitment dedication we have to this community, to what we do. It didn't matter about what our pay was or nothing like that. We wanted to give this community some peace with the shooting that happened on New Year's Day, ended one after that. But the reality of it is, it's only so long, you know, you can run a thorough break before they burn out. And I don't care how, I don't care what your pedigree is. So we really need to have a real honest conversation. This ain't bashin' nobody, and I'm grateful for what you've for you've done. But the reality of it is, we have to, we have to compete, we have to, we have to change some things if we gonna stay competitive and keep some level of excellence for this community. So I'm asking for that whenever y'all, whenever y'all have time. Cause I think, I know y'all know a lot of what's going on in the inner workings, and y'all need to be aware.
Well, that might explain why, uh, my thing, believe it's yesterday, I got a picture of about fifteen spent nine millimeter rounds in Magnolia.
Probably.
Oh, sent a picture to an officer and never got a response back. I mean, that's a lot of rounds in, right there in Magnolia Mall.
Ted Mall.
It's, Mag- Magnolia Mall. No shopping center. I'm not gonna call the name of the business that was in front of, but it just seems like you'd be curious about it. Where, where was it at? I didn't send it to you because it was in city limits, but, you know.
We get a lot of stuff-
I'm sure there were a lot of, a lot of shots fired, uh, New Year's Eve. I'm pretty sure I saw a person AK forty-seven going off, over on Franklin Street, but, uh, none, none of them hit anything I had. And I don't know what's, where y'all were. Y'all probably everywhere.
I was about to say, I know exactly where we were. We were on Fama Lane, and we were at the hospital, and we were on a lot of other places, because we had to call out a lot of people at night to get things done that we done, we went on a four-day man. You know, until we were able to after getting those interviews and first one that just, and we worked with a lot of other agencies that night. I mean, I can't tell you how many people we woke up to three in the morning saying, hey, I need your assistance, because you can do this, this, and this, and we don't have that access. This, 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 and those guys came out, and they worked with us, just like it wasn't holiday, you know? And I'm so grateful for all of them that we named in the newspaper already, because if it wasn't for them working with us and getting about their bids and digging their families, I don't know if we would've been able to after end them as quickly as we did, but it took every good and then some. And it's gonna take even more down the backside, because right now, I know we are, what, three hundred man hours?
Oh, three hundred, I want to say.
Three hundred man hours on one case, you know, while the rest of, while the rest of the things were still happening. We have three hundred man hours on one case. And that's a lot. That's a lot of time to wait. And, and so, I'm just telling you guys, when we hear from y'all, it matters to our officers. It matters. I ain't saying y'all don't care. I know y'all do. I know, I understand the situation with the county and the city. But I need y'all at the table to root here, making a work of the things, but I don't want to say public, cause I don't want to put the public in fear. Cause at the end of the day, whether we can work four hours or twenty-four hours, if something happens, yes, we gonna, we gonna come out, we gonna get it here. So, but I think it'll behoove you all to really get an idea, cause the, the city taking a lot of heat for things, but there's only so much you can do with the limited amount of people you have. And when I say they are very limited, very, very limited. So I'm asking at least two of y'all, at least two of them, let's have a conversation.
Call when you got the meeting, where everybody's at.
I will do that. Um, I do have one thing for you, Miss Stephanie. I used to want to add, add New Year's. Uh, Detentional Operations K L C, they sent an invoice back in the morning.
I've seen it, I'm sure they can, I'm sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, do I need to talk to them, or? I really, they got to take care of them. Okay, all right. Thank, thank you, Dan. I just wanted to make sure, um, Project Safe Neighborhood, you already did that. Now, Miss, that's something brought up. She can come over. She brought up, we're bringing up the soil testing again. Is that something we need, that we have to put out for bid, or what? How does that work?
I don't think there's anybody, there's only one person in state that I know. There's two of them.
Oh, there's two of them.
Yeah, but engineering services, services, you don't- Engineering services, services, you don't need to get out.
You don't have to?
Not engineering.
So, what we need to get soil testing done in the land out?
Just to.
What is the cost to do?
Sixty thousand.
We have two invoices from two different groups, do we send that to you?
What's the cost?
The board has to approve it.
What's the cost?
Uh, each of them are around fifty-five thou, fifty to sixty thousand. Fifty-five.
Both of them same?
Uh. Yeah, they, they, they the same as far as what's requested in the request for the soil testing.
Cost.
Yeah, they're about the same, they, they are about the same. They're about the same. And I can afford Charlie, you can do that too. I afford to all of you, to see what the numbers are, and look at them for yourself, and see what companies we're talking about. I guess I was under the impression that they had to go out, that they had to go out and do it, or I guess not. I, I sent it to you too, Miss Stephanie.
You got it, Scott?
Engineering services do not have.
No. I'm asking, do you have?
I got, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I might, I don't remember having. One of anything I can believe to do.
You got it from David, six months, seven months ago. But he.
He did one on, I had it a very quick day to do. Because it's, I think I had it written down, three sections by, by our MEO technical, and the foundation of the top of Rapture Surveys, uh, on the invoice.
Robbie, you got the spread posted for, uh, Walford Ranch?
Get the map back.
Yeah. On Roxy Road.
I talked to the engineer about it, because I wondered about it. November twenty-three, the state regulation, now they sent something about it. We posted twenty twenty-three.
Has y'all already been posting?
Yeah, we did it twenty twenty-three, so he's going to be back. Mr. Fordyce.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, uh, I brought it up at your last meeting, but, um, we will have, uh, um, January twenty-ninth, nine o'clock, and I will send this to all of you, the needs assessment report, and it'll be at the Manchester Grand. And then, um, also, tension, uh, that's, um, National Institute of Corrections has offered us a free eight-week program. This is something that correlates with the needs assessment to work on staffing, uh, for few, for our future needs. And you start it now, so that as things work out, that helps you on deciding your building needs and everything else too.
It's a sixty thousand dollar course that we use for.
And that's because of the pony program we did, and then our needs assessments, it's two people. And they had a group that backed out, and at the last minute, they offered it to us. Basically because of Travis. I'll send that out to you, those limitations we don't have.
Do y'all have any more questions for me on your budget? I sent the, I sent the invoice to, uh, not the invoice, I mean, yeah, it is the, the bid for that soil testing to all, you know. No questions for me going once, going twice. I will get what you do for a thing all day, I won't ask them for that day, because that's their report.
Okay.
So, do we need to approve this, uh, soil, soil testing today?
Can I do it and do you approve it?
Yeah, can you do that, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Did, did we set money aside for that?
No, we come from John.
We got the money to do that, uh, Stephanie?
We asked the harbor phone to do it, that's what we're asking.
They said John will phone us now.
All right, motion on the table from, uh, Ms. Hudson.
Say.
Second, Mr. Curry. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Period.
Thank you all.
Yep.
All right, we want to meet and vote. Um, I think from back, we have verified all five bidders. I did not see any change in the bids that were quoted during the bidding of bid open. So, would be my recommendation to award, uh, EWP project zero, C zero four four, which again, for Brooklyn, often laying in Churchill Road, to Maynard Landscaping, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and fifty-six cents. Unless there's some sort of.
All right, you heard your request, make the motion.
So, move.
Move on, Mr. Curry.
Say.
Second, Ms. Hudson. Any discussion?
Did we ever, did we ever figure out, uh, the match on these EWP grants?
I was going with the original, I think it's twenty, twenty-five, I know that somebody had, got a zero match, I'm not sure which probably. The one I had is, I have a match.
I think it's on the.
The, the C zero four, C C zero four five, I don't have a match.
I think it went on, uh, Fairborough Road, uh, Johnson, what's that one?
Another one, Dunbar Bar.
Yeah, Dunbar, you don't have a match.
That's C zero four five.
Yeah.
That's not in these.
No, it's not.
It's twenty percent across the board.
So, of these two, which are affect, which Churchill Road affects county property, correct?
Yes.
What about the other two?
Oh.
The other two are on, on.
Yeah, right, yeah, probably. Home office.
Um, did we ever come to an agreement on, or find out any information on the commitment we have after the one year?
That's up to how the board wants to do it.
We, we don't want them to have to maintain these things forever, but bottom line.
I thought we said, well.
Well, let, let, let me say this. Mr. President, let me say this. Uh, I'm not saying nobody's not doing their job, but, um, when I was with the city, we did not have this, once they did a EWP project, it was ten years before they even came back and say they had a problem with the project. My only concern is, if we do that openly, they're going to fix it where it can last for one year. Because that's all, that's all they got to make it last for, until their, their thing is up, and then.
Well, that's all.
But that's all they give anyway.
I, I'm talking about on us, it, it's, it's on us. What I'm saying is, we the one going to, y'all going to take it out of hours where the property owner could be responsible. So, the contractor need to be responsible for doing a good job. Because, I'm telling you, we didn't never have all these problems like we have now with EWP projects. When you go out and bid on a project, and we go get the money, and by the time they do the project, the project then got worse. But the money's still the same. So, they do the work compared to the money that they got. And they cut kernels and do this and do that, and some of, some of them projects be bad before the year even up. I'm just telling you. Uh, I don't know how we going to do it, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, at the end of the day, the way it's operating now, is the only person that loses in this deal is the county. Because we're the only one held responsible after a year.
You know what I like to see, Wes? I like to see something in writing to the property owner saying, if you develop a small hole in your property, contact us. See, they don't contact us until it then blew out again. And then we got to go out and deal with that situation. If, if they contact, I rather, you know what I'm talking about, if they contact us as soon as they see a rat hole, we ain't got to do nothing but go out there and put some dirt, a backfield or whatever in the rat hole, but they don't do that because they don't know to do that.
But, but also, it doesn't matter, because if it blows out, they're not.
Well, if something right, right to them, if they don't come, contact us immediately after they see a problem, we not responsible. I'd rather put something in writing like that than to put the other stuff in writing, uh.
But if they are responsible, they might watch it a little better.
That's why I say put it in writing. Let them know if you see a problem.
These companies actually do the work.
Well, see, I got one like that right now, that a project was done, and LaGrange.
It's on one company.
And she has called, what, maybe three or four times since this project been done?
BPS or something?
Every time she see a little hole, or something bad, she calls, she calls.
It's the same thing with, they got it down graph.
But you're talking about, like, you call soon.
Down graphing does, but I got it every day, like I said, they, they don't have any, anything, I would don't.
They're very skinny, man.
Yeah.
They're very skinny.
No, they don't.
Just let it blow, the counties will come official.
Yeah.
So, I said, I said it a year ago, and I'm going to stick with it, I'm not going to vote for another EWP that's on private property or that the county's responsible for, for enough, for, for longer than that year or more. We can't afford it up, down that path, we can't afford, stay on that path, we can't, and it's not the taxpayer's responsibility to take care of projects on private property. So, that's where I stand, and just want to.
I, I agree with that.
If it's going to cost.
What do the laws say about, uh, fixing property, fixing, uh, erosion on private property? Ain't that's what the EWP is designed to do, to help people to fix their property that can't help theyself? So, that's what it designed to do?
Yeah, under a few stipulations, which, you know, mobile homes, or things like that, you know, yeah.
I don't know what it was designed to do.
Yeah.
Go put it up right quick, because I got it highlighted.
But what, what Wes is saying is being carried away, because the, the citizens in Adams County can't be responsible for somebody else's house, uh, forever. I mean, we're not an insurance company.
I mean, we just have one cost of sixty thousand dollars. I just, that's where I stand, so, not going to change my mind on it.
And I dealt with it a good bit over the holidays.
And like, we live in an area that everything around us erodes all the time because of soil conditions.
One, he's talking about just cost the county sixty thousand because it failed. Contractors trying to work through the holidays on it.
I mean, we, we want to talk about giving raises to our employees and taking care of our employees, and when we're spending a million dollars a year on EWP fees, that's money that can go to our employees. And I, I'm just, that's where I stand, and that's why I sit in this seat, because I get a vote, so, that's where I stand, and that's where I'm at.
Oh, well, okay, I, I, the motion is to approve those EWP's, but how do we, how do we stipulate the fact that we're not going to carry these, we're not going to take care of these forever? Because I think that needs to be part of the motion, um.
Mr. President.
If it's going to pass.
Mr. President, uh, I, I, I don't know, but I think what need to happen is, if this county want to go in that direction, then we need to start from a point where this board agreed and found out is it legal, from the legal man, and say, from this point on, this is the way we going to handle EWP's. I just don't need thinking, you just start right now. I just think, e- even though Wes, you've been saying it for a while, but this board haven't acted on nothing, and I, I, I just don't think it's, it's proper to, to act in the middle of an EWP project. That's just me.
Mr. Slower, can we draft something?
Not a good point, I, I'm not saying your point is not good, but not in the middle of a, a project.
Mr. Slower, is there something we can draw off that when we're working on EWP on private land, that we are not responsible for the outcome, or, or, or the, the future of that property for any length of time? That is guaranteed up to the one-year end by the contractor, but not by the county. The county is not, not liable for anything.
Yeah, it, when we do the permission to, to, for the easements, you can have language in there that would do it. Now, these projects have already, you had to have easements before you accept the contract. Uh, that's our process, we get right-ofways, then we bid out the project. So, you'd have to have something additional if you were going to include it on, onto these. Well, I can say it would be good for that.
No, I'm like, we're going to have to, we're going to have to carry this vote, go ahead.
Y'all do EWP's in any other county?
Right.
What, how do they do theirs?
It's the same, the county may pay.
Forever?
Yeah. No, I'm not saying they all move the job, but it's a great time.
But if it fails and they don't go do anything with it, then what's the repercussion of that?
They took your property, they don't give it to you.
That's where you go.
That's just, it makes no sense for the county to keep paying and paying and paying, for one, one person's property. It, I mean, I mean, I can think of a hundred places on my property I need EWP, but I, but I'm going to fix it myself.
Yeah, but I ain't fortunate like you said.
Oh, fortunate.
Blessed, yeah, put it like that.
Yeah, okay.
I say blessed.
Oh, okay, I need to carry this motion, all in favor?
I mean, I.
Any names?
No.
Okay, Wes, the name, motion carries, but any future EWP's, do we need to make a motion that we're going to do something different here? Uh, Scott, or are you just going to draft something up?
All right, I would, y'all need to approve that, as Supervisor Gray stated, this is the policy, and I can have it provisioned in our temporary right-ofways or right-ofways that says that.
Basically, it's the property owner's responsibility after it's finished.
What?
After the one year is up for the contractor, it, it, it falls on them to ma- make sure that this is not happening again. And if there's something going on, they need to do something about it. Because we're not going to be there to bail them out every time.
Yeah, but it did have clear language so I can go over that.
What I like to see drawn up is a le- a letter to the property owners, when we did, doing these EWP projects, that after this one year, if they see something that's happening right then, that's, which is not going to cost us no money, because we can, like you say, dump some so, spore dirt there and take care of the problem. But if it get worse than that, where it's going to cost us money, then it's on them. I don't mind sending county maintain doing the spore dirt for them, because that's what we do anyway, we, we dump spore dirt, but.
And that's not a problem, because spore dirt is, anyone can.
Anyone, that's spore dirt, that's what I'm saying.
Let me ask you a question, uh, can we move on out of this? So, if we decide to do something that no other county is doing, that we know of, is that going to affect our ability to continue to get EWP money for Adams County?
Yeah.
I just want you to make sure that it's not going to affect our ability to get money from the federal government to maintain whatever we need to maintain, because a lot of this stuff is our properties too, so, I, I understand about the private property. But if we make a move and saying we not going to do something, and we the only one doing it, and then, and then we got a road to blow out, and the federal government say, well, we not going to give you the money for it. I, I mean, because it's going to go from the local level to the federal level real fast, that's all I'm saying. So, make sure whatever we doing, we legal, and we in order, that's all I'm saying.
We all always talk about having skin in the game, in this case, if you require a second EWP after we did the first one, and the county put up the money, then you're liable for the next one. So, we can get you an EWP, but you got to pay the twenty percent. I mean, that, I don't know why that wouldn't be fair, I just.
Mr. President, if, if they maintained it the first time, they wouldn't need to say it.
But, but the property owner needs to understand they need to maintain it. I mean, they've got to watch it, they've got to make sure, if there's something going wrong.
I, I agree with you.
I, I mean, we're just.
But the only thing I'm saying is, a lot of people. If, if the words say you perish for a lack of knowledge, just a lot of people don't understand it. I'm saying, put it in writing to them, make it plain and clear, where they can understand, if the county come out and, 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 and support your EWP, then you need to do X, Y, Z, because after so-and-so, so-and-so, that's it, they don't even know this.
And we might set a precedent for the rest of the counties that are going through the exact same thing we are.
That's why I just said it, I sent them a letter.
Paying over, and over, and over.
I have a problem with as long as it's legal and it's in order.
Yeah. That's why I said just send, have them a letter when they get to. That's why I say just send, have them a letter, when they get this EWP project done, that we would take care of it.
All right.
With spoil dirt.
So, in the future, we're gonna address that on on next EWP, Mr. President. You got anything else for us?
We need a motion, but we need a motion, but.
You do a motion, change your thoughts. And what I have written is that, on the front end, there's nothing wrong with this, and 'cause we we talked to them to get their permission to do these type of projects on every single one. We can easily explain to them, once this is done, you need to be monitoring and watching it, 'cause if you contact the county early, a simple spoil dirt request can fix it, but if you let it get too bad, then it becomes something that's.
Well, we can we deal with this at the next meeting, 'cause let me tell you something, uh. The only problem I have with dealing with people that is not knowledgeable of EWP, especially these old, senior citizen people, and you tell them you're gonna do an EWP, they got this small hole, then you go touch some of their property from over here to fix this property over here, then all of a sudden it started robbing, and ain't nobody responsible for. So, I, we just need to be ki- let's handle it at the next board meeting. We'll handle that at the next board meeting, be be prepared for the make a motion at the next board meeting, do whatever we need to do.
We can confirm with USDA about funding, whether that will impact funding, it sounds like probably it's already done.
Yeah. I I I I, well, I mean, some people say we don't have to have even a match for the EWP, but is that true?
We don't have that match for either.
They said one of them in the next group doesn't have.
The reason being is it fell in that disaster and rolling for it. The only other reason is not, we went through this, we met, we met, we met, and we done, it was gonna be a hundred percent on some we just went through, and now it's ten percent. Instead of twenty, it's a ten percent match. But rolling, the reason that one failed is because it fell on that disaster rolling for it.
Uh, we just deal with that in the next board meeting.
Might, it might be the next one, if I'll be here, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in Washington.
Well, we'll deal with, we'll deal with the next one, with all of us here, we'll do it like that.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Does that motion actually mean?
No.
No.
No, not that motion.
I was just making a comment.
No, it wasn't mine.
No, we carry the motion to do the EWP.
Right.
All right. That all departmental reports? Any public comments?
Uh, Mr. President, where is, uh, the sheriff? Somebody's.
Is he right out, is he over there in forecourt's office?
What is the sheriff's?
Somebody ID him.
Let's give us a minute, we gotta get to Sheriff.
He where?
He's in the back, he's coming.
Okay, uh, state your name and where you live.
M. B. Smith, John, you're next to the city.
Okay.
Good morning, y'all. My name is M. B. Smith, John, you're, and I'm here this morning to present a formal complaint against members of personnel here at Adams County. I know due to the sunshine laws in this city, that this, the personnel matters are exempt from public session, so I'm asking them on to the ladies' session to discuss.
Okay, uh, it.
Need to find out?
We probably need to, uh.
We could do a closed determination at a later point if you want.
Yeah, okay. All right, we're gonna, I have to set you down, we're gonna finish our reports, and then we'll we'll go into the next session. Um, Ms. Hudson, you'd like to start your report?
Okay, the only thing I have today, because I needed Robbie to check with Kurt on those, uh, two EWP projects, the one in Cary Road, and the one on Longwood Canyon. Uh, I understand that the funding is there, supposed to be there, I just wanna see where we are with that funding, since we was a full court. That's it.
She's, she's on my.
Yeah, I'm just on my report.
Ricky got an email right there stating about the ten percent, I don't know, did you get that? December the fourth.
Is he ready?
Yeah. This is the ten percent?
The number he that, the number, the email that he got, it's not matching ten percent, but look at the the face of it.
That ain't ten percent of that.
That ain't ten percent, but it said, it states it in the email, so worship me, please.
Ten percent.
Of the structure.
Yeah.
But this is not ten percent?
No, no, indeed.
'Cause we already know what the ten percent is, we already approved what the ten percent is.
Correct. Correct. I'll find out, but that's.
That would know the city, because if he may have this wrong, he probably don't know that.
Yeah, but he got it, 'cause he the one sent that. Ain't his name under it?
Yeah, but I'm saying, do he know that we only pay, supposed to pay ten percent, and this is not the ten percent of this of this project? Yeah, check with Naughton herself, I'm glad. Okay, this is what I was, you know, questioning. All right, sounds good, that's all I have.
Um, we'll get back to, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, um, I need to make, uh, a compliment of Roger Allen to the Port Board Commission to replace, uh, Mr. Wilber Johnson, Roger Allen.
He has a address?
I get the fee.
You can confirm that he's in your district?
Yeah, he's in my district.
You gotta have one per district, that's the only reason why I have.
He's in my district.
That's your motion?
Yes, ma'am, motion by Supervisor Gray, coming in second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, as hell.
Uh, I did attend the Public Service Commission, I think they're supposed to make a ruling, uh, sometime this month on the, uh, Great River Utility, uh, problem that we have in Adams County, I guess. The Great River, uh, own quite a few water facilities in 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 the state of Mississippi, and, uh, pretty much all of them having the same problem, but I, in my, uh, present at the meeting, I I didn't hear nobody was paying a hundred and seven dollars. Else was high, one hundred and seven dollars. Uh, I'm gonna thank first responders, uh, for a job well done. Maybe we need to talk to our legislate- legislators and and continue to fight to get the road department as being first responders that they need to. They don't consider y'all first responders, right?
Well, the board, we are, yeah, we've been doing it in this.
Okay, okay. Okay, Scott. Um, I wa- I don't know where I was, but I saw Senator Albert Butler, and he sent me something, and I told him, I asked him, uh, about funding for Morgan Town Road, and he sent me this, and he said that, uh, he would appreciate respond by January the seventh, anything that we request, uh.
I will literally resend the mi- the.
He got an email on here.
I have.
Oh, he's got his email?
Oh, he sent it all?
Yeah, he sent it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Ricky, I'll take that out here meeting, though, so I had to make sure I got the email, 'cause I got their normal email, but maybe he has an email that he checked on.
And.
We had sent him Supervisor Gray about Morgan Town Road, told him to make sure he's.
I don't wanna send to all of them, but anyway.
We sent to all of them, but I don't wanna.
Anyway.
They're asking for.
I I I don't know if I was dreaming or what, but I thought somebody told me that, uh, they got some money from Washington DC to build a jail shell. I don't know who it was, but it came through, uh, one of our senators, or whatever the case may be, so I'm gonna make a motion that we put something in writing, and that our congressional people up there know that we need some funding on to help us to build a new jail in Adams County. So, if they giving out some money, I wanna make sure we get ours too.
Supervisor Gray, I believe, uh, one of the issues that they paid like a billion dollars to build a police department, so you might wanna start talking right there with Supervisor, Representative Harms.
Well, we can pass it on to our Mississippi delegation and our delegation in Washington DC. Wherever we get the money from, we can pretty use it. And, let me say this. Been around here a long time. And I've been talking about crime a long time. And we have a serious problem in our community. Not only in our community, we have a crime problem everywhere, but by us being so small, uh, when something happen, everybody know about it. Uh, it's amazing that the sheriff got up and said what he said. But at my church Sunday, the preacher, uh, preached about if the foundation is destroyed, what can the righteous do? And he talked about a whole lot of positive stuff. Right now, our foundation is not where it need to be. And I guess that's what the meetings and whatever need to be called, to make sure we on a a a solid foundation, 'cause right now, people, our foundation is not a solid foundation, and everybody know, when you build a house and the foundation is not solid, what gonna happen? We got a problem, and it's way bigger than the board of supervisors. Um, this, to me, our structure and our families are not where they supposed to be. And I'm just saying this because it need, some changes need to be made. When people put rules in place and tell people they can't discipline their kids, and the Bible says, "spit on us", that's a conflict. And people don't understand, if you gonna live in my house, you going by my rules, you break the rules, I'm gonna take my bill off, and I'm gonna I'm gonna do what I got to do to my child. But now you got kids at four and five years old who know how to call nine one one, 'cause that's what they being taught, but we gotta get away from that and get back to the family structure. I don't know how we gonna do it, but to me, that's a serious problem in this country. And the guy said something that caught my attention. He say, never take something from someone, it dealing with crime and killing and all this. Never take something from someone that you can't give back to them. So, that mean if if you go out there and kill somebody, you can't get that life back. So, people need to understand, never take something from someone that you can't give back. Uh, my last deal, oh, uh, I did attend a basketball game, and it was real emotional with Natchez High School last Friday in Florence, Mississippi, and I was so proud of Florence, Mississippi, uh, school district and basketball coach and 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 whoever, uh, told them to recognize, uh, the the Rogers young lady in in the Natchez High school district, and I mean, their whole prayer was about what happened in Natchez, and I thought that was amazing, so uh, that that incident went viral, I guess, everybody, 'cause I got called from all the way from California and everywhere, and I guess, uh, you can't bring a young lady back, but the family need help, and 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 and, uh, I'm so proud of the way people in this community and out of this community have stepped up to the plate and are trying to help this family out. And last, my sympathy goes out to the individuals that was affected in New Orleans, um, I I I just can't understand that, and the Rogers family, the Johnson family, and, uh, uh, I think, I got, oh, yeah, but I'm gonna stop on the Rogers family. Uh, everybody did a resolution but us, and I think the board of supervisors need to do a resolution to Rogers family. Did you get a copy of the obituary?
I have.
But you, I'm gonna make a motion that we do two resolutions. One in honoring Kyrie Rogers, and the other one, uh, Henry House Junior. And if you don't know Mr. House, his wife was an educator in the Adams County School District, and I think the husband was an educator in the Alcorn State, uh, district. Right? So.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
And the Perry family, the Michael family, the Smith family, the Harris family, the Chapman family, you know this list is getting long, y'all? I know we hadn't had a meeting in a while. The McDonald family, the Williams family, the Lyles family, the Wimbley family, the Brown family, the Johnson family, and the Pickett family. Uh, we need to be real careful. What happened to this young lady? I don't know if these kids gonna need some therapy, I don't know, 'cause we got two or three of them play basketball, and they 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 just weren't focused, man. When you lose somebody you done went to school with all your life in a situation like that, sometimes kids need a lit therapy or whatever the case may be, and sometimes they don't act normal, but somebody got to be paying attention to these peop- these young people, because they could easily go the wrong way after a situation like that. And, uh, they had this young lady funeral, man, and and, uh, it was amazing. I done been to a lot of funerals, but I never been to a funeral that packed before. And I thi- I guess they had the whole school there, I guess, 'cause you didn't see none of the kids all over the place. Uh, before I forget, Mr. Attorney, we did get something from NAIPAC, and is it legal for us to do what they asking?
Under the Opportunities Statute, if you find that this brings forth favorable notice of the possibilities and opportunities of the county, then we certainly can.
Okay, now, help everybody got a copy of? Did you get a copy of this? Yeah, we have.
I think this is something we've done before, uh, I think they stopped it.
Covid, Covid stopped.
Yeah, Covid stopped it, and that's what it's not having, but this is, I think we've always, uh, did a sponsorship for them.
Which one we gonna do, 'cause I don't wanna make a motion, I won't.
Does any, does anybody know what we did before?
I do not.
I think it was like five hundred, was it five hundred?
The the silver sponsor?
Yeah.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we do silver sponsors on NAIPAC.
Same.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Gray, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Anybody, motion carried?
And and there, Mr. President, I just wanna say this, I mean, I said, uh, we didn't really have a bad, bad two thousand and four, but I hope our two thousand and five be better. And I would hope that we put what's best for this county before we put anything else in that conclusion.
Uh, Mr. Gray, one question.
Yes, sir.
You, uh, said something about getting with our delegates for a jail. Do you want, you wanna send a letter, do you, is that a motion that we need to carry?
Yes.
Yes, I need a second, a second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gray to send a letter to delegates.
It's not gonna hurt, I mean.
Second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried? All right, Ms. Hutchins, you already did your work.
Yeah, I did my report, but let me add this too. We just need to make sure we get a list of things. Like you said, you've already reached out to, um, Senator Butler in regards to the Morgantown project. If anyone else have any other projects, cause I know there's a project that I have that I'd like to reach out to him. And I was gonna do that today and let him know about it. Uh, if anybody else have projects, that's something we need to make sure we get done before January seventh. Because then when we go to mid winter conference and we go to the Capitol, we need to reiterate all these projects when we meet with them. That's all right.
I mean, the sooner the better.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I have something that I would like to submit today to.
I know the strategy we previously had was to have one or two things and really just push that all in tow. I mean, is it something we could decide today and that's what we do for the next year?
I know I spoke to them a year ago about it, that, uh, South Carolina continued with that project.
Thanks.
We went to the Capitol to meet with them and we spoke on that project also to get some funding for it.
Mr. President, the only reason I, 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 I said something about Morgantown Road again, because, uh, Morgantown Road was something that the city and the county was on board for lobbying to our delegation with. Everything got funded but Morgantown Road. So that's the reason I'm pushing back for Morgantown Road to get some additional funding. If, I know they got the money, so, uh.
Supervisor, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just putting it out for the information. For Morgantown Road, we do have an agreement with the city and the county that we can use a cap loan to finish that project out, which would put a pretty low interest rate. Uh, it's something that we could do within our, our financial means. So we, we can, can, or have a path in place to fund that project. It would, a cap loan is a loan, it's not a grant. But it's something that's within our financial belt, so to speak. Um, so if that's something you wanted to. I'm not trying to disagree, I just want that out.
Can I ask you a question? Even though we have a cap zone and the Mississippi legislature decide to give us five hundred thousand dollars, why we can't take that five hundred thousand dollars off of how much we got to get with the cap loan and get less than what we have to get?
That makes perfect sense. I, I'm just putting it out, I don't want you, I, you know, I think we need to pursue that project into its completion and not delay to, if we don't get it or whatever.
Well, this is what I don't want to happen. Uh, phase, what is it, two?
Yes, phase one, phase two is underway, phase one.
Well, well, we, we, we kinda cut corners and, and, and took some stuff out to get this project going. I, I don't want phase one to be the same way phase two was. We taking stuff out to make sure we get it funded. I, I want to get all the funds we can get. If we, if, if we have to, uh, 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 mill it, I want to mill. I don't wanna say, well, we gonna, we ain't gonna mill it and, and y'all gonna be here much longer than me. And two more turns, the same thing going on with the road, cause we didn't mill. I wanna do it right the first time. If you ever rode through Morgantown and need to be re, mill, you just can't put nothing on top of what's going on out there in that?
No, you got the same holes over there. Okay.
You ready for one?
Yes, one here.
Um, I just wanna echo a little bit, kinda what Supervisor Gray said. It, it always appears that December typically is our worst month when it comes to tragedy and crime. And, uh, December was rough for our community. There were a lot of unnecessary deaths, um, home fires, even one last night. And, uh, the young lady who lost her life and, and then shootings, um, unexplained deaths and some other deaths. And there's a lot of families grieving. And, um, I just wanna keep our community in prayers and, uh, hope that twenty twenty-five is better. And we find some solutions to try to curb some of this that's going on. Um, we're talking about this money and, and that's what Robbie just brought me. You know, uh, Mr. Ford mentioned Carthage Point Road. I, I don't know what his estimate was, but I don't. I don't know that it wouldn't hurt maybe to ask for a little more money for Carthage Point. Uh, they did give us some last year. I think his estimate's gonna be more than obviously what we got. But long term, uh, the maintenance down there that it caused the county, you know, if we have luck, we, we've been, we've, we've dodged it lately. But it's, what Robbie, two hundred fifty to four hundred thousand every time it.
Every time, a couple hundred thousand dollars at least.
So if we could get another couple hundred to, to do this project and do it right, I don't think it hurt to ask, to ask, so.
Let me ask this question, have they stolen that Carthage Point Road?
No, no, that's, that's.
Remember, we went through state, said we didn't have to have.
Engineers or design or whatever, now they did say we haven't had it.
And that engineering thing's gonna put a hit in that money.
Yeah.
I mean, we know that. So, no, but.
What I care is just the design of what Mr. Ford.
You know, I don't wanna just put a Band-Aid on it when we're down there. If we get a little bit more money to, to do it right, I mean, that's, that's gonna be the right lane, but how far is that five hundred can you go?
I don't cover the whole length of that deck.
That completely.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Dean.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Lewis?
I have a couple things. Um, we received the certificate back from the Department of Revenue, um, approving the realtorship roles that we submitted. We just need to have that spread across the minutes.
All right, need a motion? Move by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
Um, we also received a certificate from the, uh, the DOR related to our tax law certificates for the school and the city related to our homestead. And, um, instead, we need to have to spread across the minutes.
Need a motion, spread those across the minute. Move by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
Um, as the boards are aware, we're working on our twenty twenty-three audit right now. Uh, we did receive a proposed contract from Bridgers for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. For both of those years, it only went up a thousand dollars. Um, and so far, uh, really, the way we've worked with them, it's been, you know, very helpful and it's also been very efficient and gotten us, you know, caught up. So, um, it would be, as my, as county auditor, it'd be my recommendation that we continue to work with them. Just wanted to get the board's thoughts and y'all.
You need a motion to approve then to continue?
Yes, sir, and that's to be for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
A motion to continue for it just being our auditor. Move by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
Um, need to spread across the minutes the tax redemption settlement for, um, November.
Need a motion, tax redemptions.
Excuse me, December.
December.
Yes.
Move by Ms. Hutchins. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
Um, we need to have spread across the minutes the bonds for January. They're for Claudia White, uh, Javarnie Johnson, Melanie Murray, Stephanie Washington, and Brittany Denard.
All right, any bonds, spread across the minute. Move by Ms. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
Need to get approval for travel for myself to go to the Chancery Clark Conference in February. Unfortunately, it's the same time as MAS this time, it's never been the same time, so I'll miss MAS.
Have I got that paperwork?
Uh, I actually don't have any because the county doesn't pay for it. The judicial college pays for our certification. Um, it's February fifty to seventh in Ridgeline.
Okay. Need a motion for approval.
Hello.
Move by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
Um, need to have this meal report pretty similar for the Adams County Sheriff's Office for across the minutes.
Move by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
Uh, and last thing, um, we have a resignation from the Tax Flickers Office for Sarah Pollard. And just need to have that, uh, letter of resignation on this right across the minutes.
Move by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
And then I have an item to be determined.
Okay. Ms. Flo.
And I guess it's done, as we talked about with Project Safe Neighborhood, the following police department, uh, officers can be added as, or requested to be added as temporary or seasonal workers. Vince Bates, Melvin Davis, Lee Anthony Dorsey, Khalil Jenkins, Justin Jones, Ingenetta Kelly, Elijah Marshall, Marsaw, and Downton Orcut. I talked with, uh, Megan and Chaki, Chaki's not there, Megan, we need X, Y, and Z information from them to get them fully set up for, on our system. But these people will be these temporary workers at the rate of thirty dollars an hour for Project Safe Neighborhood. City's doing the same thing for our people, as we discussed.
Okay, you need, that's a motion.
That's a motion. And this is not for any work they've already done, this is only for future work that they.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins, second by Ms. Middleton. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, uh, I just need a clarity, that's, that's, that's once that eighty run out, we get forty from them and forty from us, right?
This is for the forty that we originally appropriated for the project of Safe Neighborhood. Once that it's gone.
Forty from them and forty from us? Okay.
That's correct. And once it's done, it's done, that's why they're temporary.
I got it.
All right, all in favor? Any needs, motion carried? Is that all you have, Ms. Flo?
Uh, our reinsurance company wants to directly deposit money, uh, into our account. I asked Chaki if that was okay for bookkeeping, could, could monitor it and so forth. And I'm gonna ask that we approve the direct deposits, but I'm gonna hand it over to Chaki for her to fill out which account she wants this, these funds to be monitored and deposited into, if it's okay with the board. This is not us directly depositing money, this is them giving us money. So I'm fine with it, it's from a legal standpoint, as long as we're not giving money to them directly, we're, what we're receiving it directly. We already received that from other entities, for example, the state of Mississippi and the federal government treat it that way.
You need a motion?
Yes.
All right.
So move.
Move by Mr. Gray. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried?
Uh, there was a grant, get, Chaki needs to get that to Chaki's, she can bill out, get it back to the minutes. There's a grant by the Department of Archives and History. They said it's to help restore, uh, Jefferson College. Typically, they say a local entity is the, uh, you know, is the entity that runs that grant and so forth. And I told them, we, we don't have any history of having performed on that grant. And so she said, that's fine, we just need to send them a letter that saying we, we don't wanna be that entity. We like the grant, that's great for Jefferson College. We don't wanna be the administrator of that grant and Archives and History would handle it for us. Got the approval for us to send a letter saying we don't wanna be a person of that, that grant.
Okay, just turn it over after.
Yeah.
So.
All right, move by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Just said, so. By us saying that we don't wanna handle it, you get automatic, automatic mean that they gonna have it or even somebody else?
They said they would. They said they would handle it, they should have a letter from us.
Motion on a bomb.
That's what I just said.
Addition, letter. Chair, the deputies were jumping on it for us, so. I got a couple items to be determined.
Okay, Ms. Washington.
I just have my item, um, first of all, I have to be at the next meeting. Um, but I have a program from Mississippi Department of Rehabilitation Services, they have internship program. Um, they have, uh, individuals that, um, express an interest on whether they want to, um, work, um, part-time on a part-time basis. And they will cover the benefits and, and workers' comp. We just have to sign a memorandum of agreement saying we can utilize them, um, one of our departments, the Justice Department will benefit from this program. So I just wanted to, um, see if it was okay with the board to approve this. Uh, I did send it to Scott to review the memorandum of understanding.
So you're saying that they gonna pay for all the costs?
Uh, eighty, I think they said three hundred and twenty hours, I believe. Um, because the individuals are, uh, on a part-time basis, um, and using that, so it's a good meaning. And they only asked us to give them a little recommendation, um, saying assistance to their work if they're seeing out with their, their performance after the program is over.
All right, need a motion?
All right, let me, let me ask one more question. Uh, what are their costs, what are they paying them? And now, they did not see that amount.
But I do have to give them like a job description for them to go back, but they can only match them if they have participants that are interested in working for the government.
And they have one real place to meet?
Um, just any, but any, any of the departments they needed, but I know that Justice Court did need some additional help, um, just to, uh, answer phones and family.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Second.
All right, move by Mr. Gray, second by Ms. Hutchins. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carried? That's it, okay. Y'all just looked over these, uh, two engineering companies, this is what they charge for doing this work. I, I don't think either one of them do, do this work. They actually have to sub it out and then the, the sub out company, I, I, I told Scott, maybe we need to get the name of the company that actually will do the work for the soil, soil studies and see what they were charged. And I, I, I happen to know who that is, I'll, I'll have to look, look up on some buildings that I've had in the past. So, just to run that by y'all.
And I talked to the sheriff, we'll, we'll have, either way, we'll have an agreement at next meeting to, to get that thing moving forward. But we're gonna see if we can just go directly with the source.
Okay. Okay, um. State road construction project, project, um, LSPP approved program. Um, you know anything about this? LSB funds, SA zero one zero zero four five. And give the second, bridge approaches. Low water bridge.
Low water bridge.
Okay.
Fully executed copy.
Okay, that it needs to be signed off on?
It just needs to be.
And I need, okay, I need to spread that across the minute, the low water bridge and, um. All right, there is, there's no place to get it signed.
Yours on it.
Okay. Need a motion, spread across the minutes, okay.
If you already signed it, didn't you?
Well, it's just a fully executed copy, so don't worry about it, just put it on there.
All right, we got Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, um. This, I believe, the tire grant, uh, it's from December the fourth, two thousand twenty-four to December the thirty-first, uh, twenty-six, twenty-five thousand dollars. Spread it across the minute. Move by Ms. Hutchins. Need a second? Second by, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carried? There's no place to sign on this. Okay, we did the, uh. I'll leave for Vernon Johnson on twenty-seven, eight hours, personal. God, I don't know what we're supposed to do with that on, and on twenty-second through the twenty-third, sixteen hours vacation. What do I need to do with these? Defer. Can we do all these together for the, uh, NACO, the Washington DC trip? It's all been approved, all I need to do is sign. It's on the front.
When that prevails?
March, what's that?
Twenty-eight through March fifth. Up there.
Twenty-eight.
March fifth.
All right, Midwinter Conference, all I gotta do is sign these as well. They need to sign. Angela Ricky need to sign these. And Wes, we got yours for, uh, Midwinter Conference. We already did these two, they seem to sign it off on, right? All these all together.
Don't do that, don't do that. Please don't do that. Will you play that role for more?
These are certifications. They need to spread across the minutes. That's Tracy Cote. It's already been approved, right? All right, we need a tr- approval for, um, let's see, a certification, training for Tracy Cote for travel, um, she's with Election Commission and Stephanie Anderson, same thing. Uh, Frances Bailey.
Frances, oh.
Mr. President, why are you doing that? Scott, could you give?
Shirley Fraser. I need a motion of.
So move.
Second by Ms. Gray, or Wes Middleton, second by Ms. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried?
I need a, a job description for the young guy, young man that is gonna be was appointed to the, uh, for commission. He need to know where his duties are. Going down there, knowing what he do.
I can't sign it.
And they meet Wednesday.
Get you the data, that'll be in the memorandum of what they, they got. Third, Wednesday.
Second, second.
I think they, they, they contact them and support, contact.
We got it, I'll feel that.
Okay, I'm gonna take that with me. This is, you just made these copies, didn't you, for the, um, work to be done on soil sampling? Y'all need a back, you need a back?
Yeah, we don't need a snack, just hold on to it until we.
And then I'll, I'll try to figure out what they're gonna do there.
We'll have something next meeting, of course.
Eleven forty-three, Marlon Luther King.
Is that Minnesota?
Roger Allen.
What's that?
Roger Allen and Ed Hughes.
Oh, okay.
The scholarship application, uh.
To the males?
For any, yeah.
Yeah, you rather just give that to Francis, to, I thought Francis.
Corvette.
See that baby, so. Corvette, when, when they're hurt.
When is it?
I think it's like April, always in April.
That's the one you gotta have a family member in Gotha, you know that?
February first. Is a application packets must be received no later than February four P M.
Is that the one you got to have a family member working with the cap?
Or I think, or having previously.
That's what family member said, just for anybody.
Robbie, uh, Kingston Road, uh, Delbert Housman, cause he's saying he's not gonna give us any money because of the state aid road.
Yeah, he's saying the state aid going, well, we have, the county already has state aid on it, four million dollars if we wanted to do anything, we had to take it out.
Tell him to take it and get the money, tell him that we do some.
We have to take it out of that.
I do need to have a talk with him. When we, when we go to the cap? Uh. Sheriff, did, did you see the, uh, post by a gentleman on Facebook about, uh, sending six deputies to arrest somebody for seatbelt violation?
Oh, y'all, y'all be looking at that?
I was just, uh.
I'm curious about it myself, so I, 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 I'm gonna inquire about it, but, um, that was one of the projects they made really bad. And I don't, I don't know what happened, but I know he needed to be arrested.
Oh, I just. I, I thought that was crazy and I, I wanted to talk to you in person, but we, I mean, this is just. Not even gonna go into details of it, it's just like, I just don't believe that all that is true. I'd like to know more about it.
It might have been on the street somewhere already, who knows? And I, I don't know, but I don't even have details on it yet because I, I just, so I just.
Well, I know, I know y'all had a busy, busy couple of weeks, uh, a lot, lot going on, uh.
Yeah, we got a lot of people like that.
Yeah, well, I, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying generally y'all had a lot going on these shootings and the storms and, uh, it, it, it's been a rough couple of weeks. And it seems like we hit, lose more people in December than any other month of the year. Oh, uh, but whether it's crime or just, just deaths and the cold weather changes, and people succumb to it and, and, uh, that, that horrible tragedy over on Westwood with that free fire and then, I guess we ought to be thankful that nobody else died in that.
Yeah, it does.
It was, uh, that, that was just awful. All the things could happen to a young person and, and for them, her to die that way, uh.
People are getting smarter at the end of the year. So when they know everybody's gonna be out shooting, that's the perfect time to, you know, crime. So that's what they did this year. Think about the timing of everything that happened. It's right under cover of.
Well.
Of everybody taking their guns out shooting at one time a year, so we asked them not to.
Yeah.
And we had people die.
I'm, I'm glad to see, uh, most likely, Mr. Gray, I'm glad to see two thousand twenty-four go. It was not the best of years, I don't think, for, for anybody really, but, uh, hopefully two thousand twenty-five will, will be a lot better. Uh, I don't know what to thank y'all or, or not, I, I gotta think about this, about board president thing, but anyway, I'm, I'm proud to serve, uh, uh, the county, uh, in that capacity. I don't have anything else in my report, um, so I'll conclude it with that. And, uh, I need a motion to, uh, go and close the termination. Moved by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Any names? Thank y'all.